A minute. Okay, we'll go with the minute.
We'll go with that.
Mr. Blair, right on the six.
You don't know when she's gonna be there. You never know. She's in and out of like her six.
I did. I read it.
You've heard it.
I heard it, I guess.
No, they send it through. I don't think he comes in anymore.
A few times.
Over at Lynch. It's the same guy, I used it.
Very universal.
Yes. And the only thing to change is the public here.
Okay, I'll put this at here then.
Good evening, Washington Courthouse. It is seven thirty P. M. on February twenty-six, twenty-twenty-five. Time for our second regular meeting of the month. At this time, Mr. Blair will offer an invocation, and our scouts are gonna lead us in the pledge. So if you would stand, please. Blair, you're up.
Thank you. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you today to discuss important matters. We ask for your guidance and wisdom. You are the source of all knowledge and understanding. Therefore, we seek your direction in our decision-making process. In the Bible, we read, "Trust in the Lord with all of your heart, and lean not on your own understanding. In all your ways, submit to him, and he will make your path straight." Help us to listen attentively to one another with open hearts and minds. May we not be quick to judge or criticize, but instead seek to understand different perspectives. We pray that you will give us the discernment to make the best decisions for the greater good. We trust that you will guide us on this path and lead us to reach a consensus that reflects your will. May our words and actions be guided by your love and grace. In your mighty name, we pray. Amen.
Okay, gang, whatever you start, we'll follow.
Scouts, will you, everyone else, hands up in your heart? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You did much better than Mr. Johnson would. No, thanks. And I found out they're just here observing, and they may have even some questions when it's all over, so we'll see. Anyway, roll call, Kelly.
Hawk.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Blair.
Here.
Call.
Here.
Christman.
Here.
Lynch.
Here. We have two sets of minutes. First, our regular council meeting from February twelfth, twenty-twenty-five. Anybody see any problems with that set of minutes? If not, do we have a motion to accept as presented?
I'll move that we accept the minutes from the two twelve twenty-twenty-five council meetings.
Second, that.
Thank you. Roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. We also had a special meeting on February twentieth, twenty-twenty-five, that I think lasted about four minutes. Anyway. Any questions about that? If not, do we have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion that we accept those minutes as presented.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. We have a public hearing for a proposed annexation of eighty-five point six-six-nine acres. I'm not gonna read all those numbers. Kelly can do that. But anyway, are there, is there anybody here that wants to speak about that annexation? This is your chance. In hearing none, we will close that public hearing and move on with our meeting. Any communication, Mr. Denon?
None.
We have Service Safety and Recreation Council Committee report tonight, and Mr. Hawk, you're up.
The Service Safety and Recreation Committee met in the council chambers located at one oh five North Main Street on Wednesday, February twelfth, twenty-twenty-five, at six thirty P. M. Ted Hart presided, and those in attendance were Mr. Jim Christman, council member, Mr. Caleb Johnson, council member, Mr. Jim Blair, council member, Mrs. Sylvia Call, council member, Mr. Dale Lynch, council chairperson, Mr. Gary Dean, service director, Mr. Tim Downing, fire chief, Mr. Jeff Fenary, police chief, Mr. Mark Pistick, city attorney, and Mr. Joe Denon, city manager. Number one, the committee benefited from a report by the fire department. And two, Chief Fenary addressed the committee and noted a successful search warrant related to drug matters. Number three, Chief Fenary noted that the most recent hire for patrol was currently attending the Ohio State Patrol Academy. Number four, the committee benefited from a report on the status of various service projects within the community. Five, the committee recommended that the administration proceed to bid lawn mowers for use at the cemetery. Number six, the committee recommended that the administration proceed to bid for the street and alley paving program. Number seven, the administration noted that the city had been awarded the OPWC grant for Market Street project in the amount of two hundred and thirteen thousand. The committee noted that the grant was a ninety percent, ten percent split. Number eight, the committee recommended that legislation be brought to council permitting the administration to enter into an agreement with ODOT for the assault program for the twenty-twenty-six year. Number nine, the administration noted road work would be completed on State Route thirty-five and Dayton Avenue with a Fayette County engineer. The committee noted the city's portion is relatively small, at seven thousand five hundred dollars. Number ten, the committee noted storm sewer work on Market Street to replace the collapsed line ahead of paving. Number eleven, the administration noted the upcoming removal of the island and tree in the center of the cul-de-sac on Holly Drive. Number twelve, the committee recommended that permission be granted to extend the contract agreement with E. M. H. and T. for engineering services. Number thirteen, the administration noted paving work would be completed on Andrick Drive by quality paving, not to exceed twenty-nine thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. The purpose being to match the pavement between the old section of the street and the new section of the street. Number fourteen, the committee recommended that the administration proceed to purchase a new lift truck for the street department, not to exceed fifty-eight thousand and twenty dollars. Number fifteen, the administration advised the committee that bids are being taken for the removal and planting of trees through the tree grant program. Sixteen, the committee recommended that legislation be brought to council, reminding the following, recommending the following appointments. Mr. Keith Eccles to the City Planning Commission, Mr. Kirk Wilson and Scott Dahlmar to the Historic District Review Board, Mr. Ron Sockman to the Travel and Tourism Board. The administration noted board replacements that were needed for the revolving loan fund board. Mr. Blair expressed a desire that the appointment of Keith Eccles to the Historic District Review Board be given further thought. Number seventeen, the committee discussed capital improvement issues and reviewed the proposed legislation. Number eighteen, the committee recommended that the administration grant Andy Wolfe permission to oversee the Iman Park Bowlfield for the twenty-twenty-five season. Respectfully submitted, Ted Hawk, Chairperson, Service Safety and Recreation Committee, Mrs. Kelly Ford, Recording Secretary.
Good job, Ted. That was a long report.
It was a lot. Thank you.
Get another piece of candy or something. Any discussion, questions?
I had a question. Number nine, the administration noted road work would be completed in State Route thirty-five and Dayton Avenue. What kind of road work were you?
They're gonna repave, and part of it's in the city, so we pay the portion of the city.
How far are they?
Originally, they were gonna go back farther, but you'll have that development work back there, so we asked them to move that back a year, so you wouldn't drag all that truck traffic over.
Okay. That's what my next question about that, coming out there.
Now, that will, part of it's been moved back to the next year.
Okay. Very good.
Anything else? If not, do we have a motion to accept that report?
I'll move that we accept the report for the Service Safety and Recreation Committee.
Second.
Roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Upstaying.
Blair.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Mr. Denon, you are up to bat with your report.
Oh, thank you. Well, we've had a long day in committee, so this is going to be very to the point. You have had that public hearing for the annexation of that property. That acreage is located across the road from the Y. M. C. Act. Planning Commission is working through a planned unit development for that property, which gives the Planning Commission a high degree of flexibility and influence over how you put the development together. And a lot of times, you, you might trade off density, but move that instead of the lot size to all like a public park area as opposed to a lot size, because not everybody wants a half acre or more. Some other folks, you know, that's what they want, so you'd be able to mix it up a little bit. But that is something that we're very pleased with and are happy to move along. It's been a fun project to work on. You also would like to thank everybody for their help with the special meeting. That allows us to move along with the sale of property that's owned by the City of Washington Courthouse in the industrial park to a user that will build a nice productive enterprise there and employ some folks, and a very good thing for everybody. Now, most of the industrial park is actually privately owned. We own very little of that. This farm was that farm that we bought, oh, several years ago. Haven't owned it all, that one, in the very scheme of things. But that was, the opportunity was there to purchase that, and that makes for a nice solution for everybody. You have, in terms of new legislation, you've got the appointments that we talked about. I'm sorry, old legislation. Well, new, you have the appointments coming up. Old legislation, you have that annexation we already talked about, that we had done a public hearing on. The tax ordinance on there, number two, twenty-twenty-five, just wanna remind everybody that several years ago, the state of Ohio required municipalities to have a uniform tax code, although some people didn't do that, and nothing's happened to them. But we played by the rules we're supposed to and adopted what we're supposed to, and we had a lovely eight-page tax code, I think.
Yes.
And it worked very well, and everybody understood it. And not surprisingly, what the state of Ohio wanted us to adopt in its place is very long, very complicated. But this just simply updates, changes to our tax code to match what the state of Ohio wants.